I call this City Commission Special Meeting. Friday, March eighteen, two thousand twenty-two to four that at three P M. May we please stand for the invitation provided by Commissioner Mervin, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, God, we come before you today, God, to say thank you. Thank you for this day, God, what you have made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in this day. God, as we come together today, God, to do the business of this city. God, we put it into your hands, God, because you know all things. You foresee all things, oh God, and you will uncover all things. So, God, we pray today, God, that we be led by you, God, not of our own God, but by you. God, we ask you, oh God, to just direct our ways. Lead us in all truth, oh God, today. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Let justice be served. And two republics, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I call Madam President?
Vice Mayor Bowlin.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Perez.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
And Acting City Attorney.
Chief of City Attorney.
City Clerk here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank each of our audience from the public for coming to participate in our special call meeting. This meeting was called by outgoing Commissioner Regina Bowlin, and agreed upon by the two other Commissioners, Commissioner Perez and Commissioner Gonzalez, to have this special call meeting. I would say it's not an emergency, and normally our meetings are reserved for emergency on special call meeting, but as long as three Commissioners agree, then we would have a special call meeting. I want to acknowledge that the City Clerk did, no, City Clerk, sorry, City Attorney, did indicate that it wasn't an emergency and requested that we give at least a seventy-two hour notice to the public, which was done. So, we're going to proceed with the agenda. There are two items on the agenda that was placed on there for discussion. Those will be the only items that will be discussed outside of Commissioner comments at the closing of this special meeting. First topic is the prosecution of Keith Babbs and Jocelyn Adams for illegal distribution of city funds. I'm not sure if that's referring to my son or my father, who it didn't indicate mayor, so I'm not sure who they're referring to. But I'll just open it up for Vice Mayor Bowlin to begin the discussion, since she was the one that asked for this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to prosecute Keith Bab Jr. and John Jolynn Adams for illegal distribution of the city funds.
I second it.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Bowlin and seconded by Commissioner Perez for the prosecution of Keith Bab and Jocelyn Adams for illegal distribution of city funds. Call for question.
I have a question. I've been doing research since I got more information on this. I would recommend giving the mayor a reprimand and get a copy of the minutes and the video and the copy of the check to Inspector General and Attorney General, or seek a third party to do an investigation.
What are you talking about, Yanni?
Yeah, because it doesn't matter. If you were to prosecute him by now, as soon as the commission changes, it's going to change, it's going to be dropped.
No, it's not. We put in a motion to prosecute. We're ordering the attorney to prosecute.
Right.
The two individuals that authorized against the commission order, they authorized payment for a check, especially when he was not, he didn't have to get it because he resigned. He gave two weeks' notice, he was supposed to give thirty days.
Thirty days, that's correct.
Okay? Then we told him not to pay it, and they paid it behind our back without our approval. What else is there that you need to wait on?
Well, I've spoken with our interim City Manager, I've spoken with Brandon Burr's son in reference to this and other people, and that's pretty much what everybody's telling me is the best way to do it.
What's the best way?
To get a copy, send the Attorney General, Inspector General, a copy. Yes, a copy of the check, a copy of the video where we discussed it, and send the minutes, and they'll take care of it, and they'll investigate it, and they'll be the ones to handle it. And for whoever wants to file charges, call Palm Beach County Sheriff Department and press charges.
You know what will happen? The I D. will send it to the state attorney, which the state attorney will talk to the city attorney, and all the Commissions will agree not to prosecute, to make some kind of arrangement, and that's what's going to happen, like it always does happen, like it happened with everything else that we have done.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I know there was wrongdoing, I mean, it's plain to you if you get the videos and you see that.
Then let's do this and then do that and send it.
There's.
Because the balance is already, it'll already be.
Clear that it was supposed to not be paid until we had the correct backup.
I agree with you, this ain't the proper way of doing it.
This, to me, is a joke.
I'm sure it is.
You would think it was a comment show. I had no authorization given to pay out any payment. That's up to the interim City Manager at the time. The Finance Director also stated and wrote a letter and actually got on call to share with you that those fund distribution was what the city was obligated under the current City Manager contract.
No, again, we gave them directive to not disperse.
I did not direct anyone to pay anything as far as the distribution of vacation and sick. I do believe he was entitled to it based on the information we received. I was one of the most vocal and asked the most questions concerning the payout to make sure that the hours that was being paid, as best to my knowledge, was accurate. You all came with all these different accusations with no proof in hand. You had over two, three weeks to come up with, I'm speaking. I'm speaking. And on the side of that, okay, but again, the insurance company also instructed or advised the interim City Manager to pay out the payment because of a pending lawsuit, and knowing that he was entitled to that, and we really didn't have a case. You all have been customarily to put this city at financial risk for lawsuit on top of lawsuit, and you're going to enter another one with me for slander. You're saying things that you cannot prove, and this is not a Senate. We don't prosecute anyone. If you had a.
Are you not, were you not the second signer on the check?
I'll let you talk, I didn't sign any checks.
You weren't the second signer on any checks?
I didn't sign any checks. Payroll typically is done through a payroll system. My name may be on there, but I didn't authorize nor did I sign any checks.
Who authorizes payroll?
You're trying, I don't need to answer your question, you're not a Senate. This is not a prosecution.
I'm the Commissioner, and I'm asking my City Manager, who authorizes payroll? Is that a Senate question?
Who authorizes payroll?
Yeah, who authorizes payroll?
It would be the interim City Manager, that's her obligation and responsibility. I don't direct anybody to be paid for anything, that's not my part of my job. Unlike you and the other Commissioners, I don't interfere with the day-to-day. I don't tell the City Manager who to fire and who to hire. I don't dictate to staff what to do and when to do it.
No, you got Commissioner Mervin to do that. Because she talks to all the vendors, she talks to all the contractors that we are, she talks to Tyler Housing. She calls everybody, but she's not interfering with the day-to-day operations. But yet, we can't even talk to the City Manager, because then we are interfering.
Let me bring to your attention, you three caused this city over seventy-four thousand dollars for violating the sunshine law.
I thought we were supposed to discuss what's on this, not that.
We are talking about this.
No, we're not.
Yes, I'm talking about this particular topic.
This particular topic has nothing to do with that.
Violated the sunshine law.
It has absolutely nothing to do with that.
It caused this city seventy-four thousand dollars.
You just keep on with your craziness.
I'm crazy.
Yeah.
I'm going to give others a chance to make any comments they desire.
Mayor Bab, this, to me too, is very ludicrous to even be in this commission meeting today. The air report that they asked for from the interim City Manager, even when the second interim City Manager came, they got a copy of the time from the Human Resource that was procured by the former City Manager, they got a copy of the check, they got the letter from Paycheck, who was the outside who does the payroll checks, that advising us that because of the pending lawsuit on the city, that it will be advisable to pay out the former City Manager contract. Plus, that's his contract. If you look at number two in here, they're probably almost the same thing they're about to do today. So, it's almost the same thing they're about to do that they're causing wrong. So.
Read it.
So, we need to.
Read what you're saying, so the people know, so the people know word by word, what is it that you're talking about, and not what you just want to tell the people.
Commissioner Perez, you have to order allow her to speak, and then you'll get an opportunity to speak, not interrupt her.
So, again, this is an uncalled meeting today, but we're going to move on with the meeting today.
Any other question from the Commission?
Yeah, I have a comment. This was clearly told and a directive given to not pay this money until we had clear backup that it was due. It should have never been processed, this check should have never been processed. Someone is at fault. The only people that I know at this point that had any access to any bank accounts was the city interim City Manager, John Jolynn Adams, and the mayor, Keith Bab Jr. Those are the only two people who had access to the bank accounts. And however it got transferred, however it got processed, however it got paid, it was clearly stated in this meeting that it was not to be paid. I don't see how anyone could see that there wasn't something done wrong. To me, that is absolutely clear that somebody took the initiative and paid this out and decided that they did not have to pay any attention to what the Commission said. They could do whatever they want, and the checkbook was like a piggy bank. I'll just take out what I want and do what I want with it.
I want to know who authorized payroll to make the payment.
If it was authorized, it would have been at least at a minimum the interim City Manager and the Finance Department. Those are the ones that authorized the payment.
So, they had the right to authorize payment when the Commission said not to pay?
They had a legal fiduciary responsibility to pay out his final information.
Based on what, based on what?
Based on his sick and his vacation leave.
Based on what, to read the contract, he said that if he resigned, he had to get thirty days' notice. He gave two weeks' notice, not thirty, right there, he violated that. But yet, you guys still demanded and said that he had a lawsuit and all this stuff, when we kept telling the city attorney, it was not. It's not, just because an attorney tells you doesn't mean that it's right.
Your own insurance company advised the City Manager to make the payment.
The City Attorney advised the.
Your insurance company.
The insurance company, so the insurance company on their own authorized and unauthorized this payment of whatever goes on here.
They recommended and advised them to make the payment. Your City, a Resource Director advisor, your Finance Director advisor, and your interim City Manager. You have four people saying that this payment should be done.
So, let me ask you this, why didn't they bring it back to the Commission and say, this is what we are being advised?
I asked them.
Should we do it or should we not?
You put my name on this as if I made the payment and authorized it. I hope each of you all got some saving, because you would be sued for saving.
The bottom line stops with the City Manager and the City Mayor. Those are the two signatures. Those are the two people that are supposed to oversee anything that's signed to be paid or that comes in, that's it. You two are the bottom line.
Payroll, I do not sign payroll. Any payroll that's due, whether it's the end of their tenure, employment, I don't sign any of those checks, not one.
No, we know, it's a rubber stamp.
And that's a process that the payroll have adopted. If you see some changes in that as a Commission, that's what you need to address at some point.
Mayor Bab, they claim, they say, they're saying that you got to see.
The right people are watching and are listening to what's going on here.
Absolutely, the world is listening.
I hope to God, please, let the right person, let the right person be tuning in and watching and listening of what's going on in this city.
Mayor Bab, they, again, Human Resources brought the, Human Resources brought the accurate paper to the Commission. Everyone received that. Everyone received the paperwork on what the Human Resources.
How do you know what I received? How do you know what I received? Because I didn't receive any of that stuff. Because we kept asking over and over and over, we asked Lucas, we asked Adam, we asked everybody. Nobody knew nothing about the check.
We'll move on with the motion. I don't think anyone in their right mind would make any type of prosecution on something as ridiculous as what we have in front of us. And we have an individual that really is no longer Commissioner, and she just technically is based on the swearing in.
She's going to Commissioner it to twenty-second, don't be disrespectful.
No additional question, are you ready for a vote? And make the motion clear, who are you authorizing to prosecute? Because it seems like you all love the law.
I'd like to amend the motion to prosecute anyone who had anything to do with this transfer of this sixty-seven thousand.
Go by what's on the agenda. Can't change, go with on the agenda.
I'd like to make the motion the same way I made it to start with then. I got no problem with that.
Hearing no additional question, call for vote, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Bowlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Mervin?
No.
Mayor Bab?
No. Motion failed. I have three, two, one. Next item on the agenda is the termination of Greg Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to terminate the City Manager as of, what is it, eight, March twenty-third, pursuant to paragraph nine A of his contract.
Second it.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Bowlin and properly seconded by Commissioner Perez to terminate City Manager Greg Thompson contract. Call for questions.
Can you please read that paragraph? What you're referring to?
Don't you have a copy of this?
Can you read the paragraph, please? You put the motion on the floor, can you please read it for the auditor that might not have it? They don't have, they don't have it out here. Can you please read it into record and soul?
Yeah.
They can read it.
No problem. Without cause, employer may terminate this agreement without cause at any time and for any or no reason by paying the manager twenty weeks' severance. Severance shall be paid by the employer continuing manager's normal pay and frequency of pay for the severance period. During the severance period, employer shall continue medical coverage of manager. However, manager is not entitled to any other benefits. Manager will be paid for all the time worked through and including the date of termination and unused accrued vacation time.
Okay, now, Mayor, I'm going to read from your ordinance, some of the same stuff they just talked about in the last thing, it said, I'm going to read from your book of ordinance, section three point oh three removal. To remove a charter officer, the City Commission shall adopt a preliminary resolution stating reasons for the intended removal and shall offer the charter officer an opportunity for the public hearing before the Commission on the matters raised by the resolution. This preliminary resolution may also suspend the charter officer from duty immediately with pay. The charter officer must accept the offer of public hearing or file a written response within ten days of the adoption of the preliminary resolution or the resolution becomes found as inspiration of this ten-day period, and the charter officer is terminated on that date. If the public hearing is requested, it shall be held not earlier than twenty days or later than thirty days after the adoption of the preliminary resolution. After such public hearing or after consideration of any written response, the Commission shall adopt a final resolution of removal or let the preliminary resolution lapse. So, is there a resolution on, we have firing of this city?
Where was that resolution when we fired, when we fired weeks? Why didn't you come up with that resolution when we fired weeks?
It's in the charter, Perez.
We're going by it.
But y'all forgot about it and forgot to look at it, huh?
Let's look at this for what it is. Let's look at this for what it is. This is an attempt.
I want the attorney, I want to ask the legal advice of the attorney.
Can I finish my comment, Mayor Bab? So, we have, I'm asking a question, Mayor Bab, have you received any resolution? Or have the acting City Attorney drew up any resolution of the firing of, removal of the charter officer, City Manager Greg Thompson?
We can direct, I haven't received one. We can direct that question to the City Attorney. City Attorney?
I have not drawn up any resolution as the meeting is occurring in the moment. However, I can prepare a resolution and send it to the City Park to print, so you often review it. I would need about fifteen minutes.
No, that's not, that's not acceptable, City Attorney. We're in the middle of the meeting now. We're in the middle of the meeting now. You cannot go out and now draw up a resolution in the middle of a meeting and bring it back.
She just said she could.
You cannot do that, we're in the middle of a meeting. This should have been done, this has to be done in the meeting, then you come back to your commission meeting and read from the City Attorney the resolution. That's the process of resolution. You cannot draw up a resolution now and then vote on it the same day. That's not the ordinance of your city, that's not the charter of your city.
She just said what she could and could not do.
That's not, that's not acceptable, that's going to get you arrested.
Vice Mayor.
So, again, since there is no preliminary resolution stating this, and if we could amend Regina Bowlin's motion that we will dismiss the termination of Mr. Greg Thompson at this time. That's a motion.
I want to ask the City Attorney. Can, according to the, I don't know if you have read the City Manager's contract, and if you read it, it says that we could terminate his contract at any time. Do we go by the contract, do we go by the charter? What, because here it's done according to whatever the convenience is, so can you please clarify?
So, we need to go by both, the charter and the contract. Just to be clear, you are correct, the resolution is not for you. And if you vote, and there's a majority that directs for, you know, a resolution to be created and obviously read and reviewed by all parties, we can take a brief recess and do that.
No. That does not what the ordinance says, City Attorney, sorry. That's not what it says in this ordinance and this book here, this is your Bible for your city.
I make a motion that we take a fifteen-minute recess, let her draw that up, and then we proceed.
No, no, that's not right, that's not right.
I can make any motion I want.
Let's, let's be clear.
But it wasn't a second.
There's a motion that's currently on the floor, we and Commissioner question.
Well, I amend her motion to say that we have the City Attorney, we recess for the time length that takes her to draw it up and send it to us.
That's a totally different motion.
Doesn't matter, I'm amending her motion.
We have a motion, we have a motion currently, we have a motion currently on the floor.
And I'm allowed to amend her motion.
We're still going through questions. I have a question. I just need to be perfectly clear that everyone know this is a means of paying the City Manager fifty thousand dollars. I mean, they're causing the city, they are elected to save and be responsible for the city. But this what this motion is about.
So have you, how much have you cost the city all these six, seven years?
And these are the people that was elected to represent this city. And Vice Mayor Bowlin is attempting to take the other two down with her. She's already out the door. She's out the door, and they are trying to agree on something as outrageous as what is being presented to us.
I'm agreeing on what's right.
You don't know how anybody's going to vote. Again, you're telling everybody how to vote, which is what you do all the time. You make a decision that we're all going to vote as our way.
Can you get a reason of what, what's the reason?
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm talking.
Mayor Bab.
Can y'all please be quiet? Oh, no. You said you were going to clear it, but you're not clearing it.
Mayor Bab.
It's okay when they're giving me.
Are you making your comment?
I'm making a comment.
I have a question for the sheriff. What would it take for you to remove the people that are being, I put a motion that you remove out of here anybody that is out of line. I made that motion. And she seconded.
Call for, call for, call for a vote.
No.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor, they can't do that, you're the only one that can preside.
Call for a vote, Mayor.
You're the only one that could tell to them by directing of, uh.
Yes, ma'am, at this point.
Yeah.
Mayor Bab, the question is, let's be back on the firing of Mr. Greg Thompson. And so, I have a question, Mr. Thompson. Well, who, what is the reasoning of firing Mr. Greg Thompson when just in the last meeting or two meetings ago, these three, they stated he's doing the best, he's the best City Manager that we've had in the city of Pahokee, doing stuff that no other City Manager has ever done. And so, now, you're terminating the City Manager.
Because you're going to do it twenty-second.
You just said about putting people out. So, I'm asking, what is the reasoning?
And that need to be part of the preliminary resolution anyway. And that need to be part of the preliminary resolution anyway, so that need to be stated specifically.
It has to be in there.
It says without cause. Without cause means you don't give a reason.
It doesn't matter.
Without cause means there is no reason.
No cause means no cause, because we feel like it.
No, no, that's not what it means. You're gonna follow it, you follow it. Without cause means without cause. You don't have a reason.
In, in addition to question. In addition to question. Her and then we're gonna move to vote on the motion.
You can't, Mayor, you have to have a resolution.
Which one?
You can't, you can't. You gotta have a, she needs to draw up a resol- okay, then another question is, we have an interim attorney and I have to ask this. Right now, we don't even have a city attorney in the city of Pohokee that's on file, all right? We don't have one that's on file. We have not even voted for the one that's sitting in there, has an interim, to be the city attorney. So, I don't know who we are directing to do or in to put, draw up resolutions or ordinances. How did she even come to the city of Pohokee? Who called her originally into the city?
Let's, let's close that question.
So, uh, when she's on the line.
I asked her.
So, we, we need to know that, 'cause that can only come through the vote of the commission. So, we need to know that before we can move forward with anything else.
City, city attorney, did you hear that question?
I, I did. And I just wanna clarify, you want to know how I come to be sitting here?
Yes.
Okay, so, I, I, as I'm sure you all know, your city attorney passed away. Um, he was retained by the city to provide a service. Um, I offered to act as an acting attorney for the city. So, I am, I'm not your city attorney. I am an attorney acting.
By whom? I'm saying, we're acting for by whom?
She said she by whom.
She said by whom.
By the, by the office of the, of the city attorney. So, um, by the office.
Okay, I understand, but they cannot, now, see, we're getting into other, we, we's now. They could, they cannot go out and say, okay, um, since this person is no longer here, now we're gonna ask the TG law to come in and step in for, that, you could, that's, 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 you cannot do that. That's, that's really, you cannot do that. So, um, so again, we have no city attorney to direct anybody to draw up resolutions. We have, to me, she's here to me only as a legal sufficiency to make sure things are going through legal, legal. But as far as drawing up resolutions, as drawing up or, she is not, she cannot put her name or stamp on anything as a resolution for the city of Pohokee. We have nothing on file and no disrespect to Mrs., uh, I can't say the last name, but no respect to the, the attorney. But it, but that's, that's, that's law, Mayor. We cannot, we cannot direct that to go that way.
Commissioner, where'd you go to law school at?
Yeah.
Where did you go to law school at?
She's wasting all my.
I have to go to law school, well, I know, but I won't.
You're wasting your time in janitorial, girl, because you know the law back and forth. You need to be practicing legal.
I do.
Yes, you know more than attorneys. My God, I'm so impressed.
City manager, did you hire her as the attorney? Who's paying her?
She's acting on behalf of Brandonburg Associates. She is filling in.
Mayor, again, our city attorney.
You don't have a contract. I don't know.
Mayor, our city attorney was Gary Brandonburg.
No, was Brandonburg and Associates.
Our pay, our city attorney was Gary Brandonburg. He might have a thing, but he, they cannot, even in, even in Cluerson, did y'all not, um, um, vote to have, what's it, Dylan, as your guys' attorney?
He's grieving. His father just passed.
Oh, God, that was your side, wasn't it? You gave me the conversation.
Don't you have compassion for people? Y'all just don't care about anybody or anything. You're on a vengeance.
The point she's making, Dylan is now currently the Cluerson city attorney. So, he was actually a corner, no?
No, sir.
Well, Mayor, we don't have to go to Cluerson. We're in Pohokee. So, right now, Mayor, we, we deny hiring.
This is not on the agenda.
Dylan, Dylan cannot just say, I'm gonna go out.
And we don't have, our legal representation is a valid concern and question.
It's not on the agenda.
Even if Brandonburg and Associates is now currently our legal representative, she is not part of, although they contracted her to provide some legal help for the city, uh, vice, but she's not part of that firm herself. So, the contract is actually with Brandonburg, currently Brandonburg and Associates.
Excuse me, Ms. Torcivia, can I ask a question?
Then she can continue to be legal representative.
Ms. Torcivia? Hello?
Ms. Torcivia.
Unfortunately, that, unfortunately, that, that's not a hundred percent accurate.
Okay.
I, I, I lost certainly in contract with, with outside counsel, which is, which is what I, I guess would be considered. I did provide a, a contract to the city to serve as attorney. I believe it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
But again, it's still not at this meeting.
If y'all be quiet, we'll talk.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. She's still talking. Hold on for a second. Go ahead.
At the first meeting that, at the first meeting I attended, this, this commission did give me specific directions to draft ordinances and do some research, which I certainly am working on, uh, for the, for the meeting next week, as you see on the agenda. Um, and as we remain in this role, uh, until at least next meeting, until you could hire a new city attorney. That was the direction that, that I received at that meeting. Um, so, so that's the, that's the capacity, and again, I'm happy if you, if you wanted to go back to that meeting for the case. Um, it was towards the end of the meeting where that discussion came up. The lead, I think actually by you, Mayor Baff, uh, said I would serve in this role at least until the next meeting, because we got defined a new city attorney. I, you know, I'm not sure what you're, what the city plans to do. So, so that's the direction I've been, I've been working under. Um, and, you know, certainly I served as a pleaser of the city, i- i- as of Mr. Brandonburg's firm. So, um, you know, if this isn't a direction you wanna be in, that, that's fine. But that's how I come to be here today, uh, sitting in this role.
Did, did the city receive any type of, uh, communication from Brandonburg and Associates to, uh, recognize you as the legal representative of the firm on behalf of the firm? I, I haven't, as a mayor, received any type of documentation or any type of letter or any type of communication with that firm. I don't know if the city manager have received anything, uh, directing, uh, the city to, uh, uh, consider her as the legal representation till they make other arrangements. Did, did you receive anything, Mr. Thompson?
If we go back on how we needed a new city attorney, I think everybody can understand the position the city was in. And we needed representation. We needed counsel at our meetings. And Ms. Torbickio, uh, was standing in for Brandonburg Associates, and she has a contract for interim to be signed at the next meeting.
I understand all of that, but the question was, did the city receive an official communication from Brandonburg and Associates?
No.
In the, okay.
Okay, so let me ask you this. Why was it okay for her to sit there and do the work all this time? And y'all didn't say a word, and now, now it's a problem because she's saying something you don't like.
Same reason.
Yeah. As long as she was agreeing with what you wanted, she was fine to sit there and.
She didn't agree with the same we wanted. She did what was right by the law.
As long as she was doing what you thought the law was. You're not a liar. You don't know. You just heard her say what the law was, but you're ignoring it.
No, I'm not.
Okay. Again, I make the motion that we allow the, Ms. Torcivia to draw up a resolution. We take a fifteen minute recess while she does that.
My second, that's wrong, that's wrong.
The, 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 the motion, the motion is the termination of Greg Thompson as our city manager. It requires a preliminary resolution, which we don't have. This motion and this request is really invalid until we get that, uh, preliminary.
You don't get to choose.
Excuse me?
You don't get to decide what's, what's valid and what's not. If I make a motion and it's seconded, you don't get to decide if that motion is valid or not.
City attorney? City attorney? This second topic and motion was.
It is not a second topic. It is part of this termination. You yourself just said that five minutes ago.
When I say second.
That whether or not the attorney was valid.
I'm, I'm speaking.
Yes, I am interrupting you because you're just changing what you just said. You cannot have me as.
Yes, we do.
No, you can't.
You basically not even.
Get over it.
You barely a commission at this point.
City, city attorney, you just said that the part of discussing the information, whether or not you are an attorney is a part of this. That's the same thing. This is a part of that.
I'm asking, this is just a warning. The Vice Mayor continued to interrupt. I don't mind her speaking when she have her turn. And anyone speaking should be acknowledged by the chair before they speak. You're interrupting this proceeding. You have your opportunity to speak and be recognized. At this time, the mayor is asking the city attorney a question. There's a motion that was made in second for the termination of Greg Thompson as the city manager. However, the charter calls for a preliminary resolution, which we don't have at the time. I find this motion now to be invalid until the time we have one, which, at my explanation, would be at our next commission meeting, if it exceed that for. Am I correct or am I wrong?
Is, is your question, if the motion to terminate the city manager is invalid because there is not a resolution? Is that the question?
Yes.
Um, the motion to terminate the city manager can, can certainly be made at any time. The city charter would also need to be followed. So, if it was the will of the commission to terminate the manager, they could direct the city attorney to draft the resolution so that the, the charter would follow. Um, again, as long as everything's happening in the sunshine, which this is, this is a public meeting, properly noted, uh, it's being streamed live on the internet, a- as long as everything's happening in the sunshine, it, it's up to the will of the commission, right? So, again, the, the charter is your document, the living document, which is why you make changes to it and make changes often. So, the, the body, the elected body can make a decision, uh, one way or the other. They can say, we want it, we want to move forward with the termination of the city manager and do X. We want to move forward and do Y.
That's not allowed.
As long as it's followed, there's not a problem with the process.
Man, you cannot come.
How come he came the third time? How come she, how come he came the third time?
I was waiting on the third time just to come up here to stand. No, I'm not going out.
I'm gonna sit on down.
Three times he went on.
Sit on down.
Sit on down.
City attorney, the second part of that question, even if you're able in the next fifteen minutes to prepare a preliminary resolution, with that resolution not being here, that we cannot physically see it, how can we vote on that particular preliminary resolution?
She can email it to the city.
I apologize, Mayor, I'm sorry about this.
I'm asking the attorney.
So, what I could do is draft it, and I do have, you know, sort of the general framework of a resolution that I keep, for any resolution, right, that I, that I start from. This is why I don't take that long to draft them. I would then email it to the city clerk, who would print hard copies and distribute them, um, as to fit, obviously all tall elected, um, for the city manager to review.
I can't hear.
And certainly, when you review it, you can, you know, say no, or, you know, say whatever you want about it. You can ask for revision, you can ask for anything you want. Uh, but you would have a conference. Certainly, I would not ever recommend you vote on a resolution that you have not reviewed.
Well, well, in the past, they, they, they had a problem with getting stuff right in the middle of a meeting and review. They always voted no.
Well, that's a fact. You keep saying, don't get, live in the past.
They voted no, um, um, on if you get a resolution right now. They said you need to bring it back to the next meeting. So, um, right now, we, as, as of section three point oh-three of your, your city charter, it, this is, this is, this, you know, and too, and the thing is, who says that they were firing, they, you hear out here, oh, that's what y'all gonna do at the next meeting? Um, I don't think I ever, ever, ever stated that to anyone, but they assuming that Mr. Greg Thompson's gonna get fired at the next meeting. That's what they're assuming. That's, that's an assumption.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor, you, you having a medical issue? I mean, you're, you're, you're disrupting with all of this. Is you nervous?
No.
Okay, okay. City attorney, given the time of fifteen minutes, you, you think because this motion is on the floor that this is an emergency situation where we need to consider recessing for fifteen minutes to allow you to draft up? If that's your recommendation?
No, I didn't want to say. I certainly have not ever said anything about an emergency situation. Um, certainly, this is not an emergency. What I, what I'm saying to you is, as an elected body, you, you can make a decision how you want to proceed. You could say, we want you to draft it and present it at the next, at the next regularly scheduled meeting. We want you to draft it and present it at a special meeting. You can tell me to do whatever that is, within the bounds of the law. You tell me to do whatever you want.
As, as, as a legal representative, wouldn't that possibly be your recommendation that the request would, should be made to draft the preliminary resolution and present, have it presented at our next commission meeting? If you were given legal advice as a recommendation, would, would that be normally your recommendation in any other circumstance?
I would say that certainly you want to provide ample notice, but the way your code is written, you, you did create an agenda item for today with sufficient sunshine notice, that there was, that this topic would be on the agenda, right? You didn't add this as an agenda item. So, if anyone in the public reviewed this agenda, they would have seen that the removal of the city manager was to be discussed, right? So, there's, there's notice as to this topic. Now, the, the notice to the manager is more to do with the manager's rights for due process. So, the manager has a right to know what the city is, um, you know, saying about him. You know, certainly, if you're going to terminate a manager for cause, you want to prevent that cause. And, uh, that's, failing to do that would subject the city to litigation with respect to violation of due process and potentially other things. But, so it, it's, it's really more about the cause of the, of the manager. It also does provide, uh, a fairly ample amount of time for the manager to either request a public hearing or respond in writing. So, there's quite a bit of time built into the process that you have. But again, you are an elected body, and as long as you're acting within the bounds of the law, you can do what you want. Um, and so, this is a, this is a thorny situation, obviously, but you, you have the right as an, as elected officials, as long as you're within the bounds of the law, to do what you want. And you certainly have the right, and, and elected officials often will make a decision to terminate a city manager or a city attorney or city clerk, right? That, that's just, that's what happens with charter officers. Um, and so, there's a lot of different ways to do it. Certainly, I would want to ensure that Mr. Thompson's due process was protected so that the city is not subject to a, a litigation claim for due process violation. But as long as the process, with respect to his due process and his rights as an employee and a charter officer is maintained, there's, there's not a problem with his re- and just so you. And just so you know, based on this discussion, the resolution will be very short, maybe half a page if that. Fairly simple, it seems to be a fairly simple reason, as you stated, without cause. So that reason would just say without cause. So I don't know if that answered your question, and if not, please ask the follow-up, but that's...
The follow-up, I know that this city commission can do some foolish things as long as it sits within the law. And whatever they're doing tonight is probably is within the law. But my question to you as a legal advisor to this commission, would that be something that you would normally... Just forget about the controversy going on here. Would that be something that you would normally recommend to a commission if they asked for legal opinion on how to properly do what they're trying to do? Whether it's legal or not, I'm just asking you, in a normal situation, would you recommend to this commission to recess for fifteen minutes? Let me rush and draw up a preliminary resolution, have it faxed to the city clerk, and then present it to you all for a vote? Is that something you would normally recommend as a city attorney?
You're asking for two things. You're asking for a legal opinion and I would say sort of general advice. Legally, again, I think you're fine, especially with respect to due process. And it is the city manager's due process we're talking about. So legally, I think you're fine. Is it best practice? If you went to a League of Cities conference and there was a speaker who was speaking about this, I think they would certainly say this was not best practice. However, that does not make it illegal or wrong, or candidly, it does not make it out of bounds. Certainly, there are many citizens that will ask for changes on the fly to document or, you know, new documents, the lines of documents are short, and there's ample opportunity to review them.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner, then I'm asking.
First of all, if you draw up a resolution, it's not fair to the citizens 'cause they have not had a chance to look at it. If you just draw up a resolution right now, that have not, and by law, the citizen should be able to look at the resolution prior to coming to the commission meeting in case they have something just to comment on. You cannot just draw up a resolution and give citizens no way of commenting on a resolution. So all that also is why this is not right. And number two, I wrote a court, let's say, attorney, can they substitute a termination without cause as a way for the CM to resign?
I'm sorry, I want to understand your question.
Can they substitute a termination, can they substitute termination of the city manager as a way of what they're trying to resign? Like, to me, if you listen to what's going on, this already done been talked about and been coerced already, even through the... Even through the city manager, or you could... If you're really listening, if you're really listening, if anyone would be really honest and hear this out the first time, you can pretty much tell how this was already played out. So but anyway, for the part of the resolution, it's not fair to... It's not fair to the citizens to draw up a resolution. They have no chance of, they didn't read it, they don't know what the resolution is about. So and we all know, normally, when a resolution goes after any attorney, we direct them to do the resolution and they can bring it back to the next scheduled commission meeting. That's done like that through every attorney that sat in that chair.
What we have is a motion on the floor. I'm gonna proceed with this motion. I don't think all three of them gonna go down with Commissioner or Vice Mayor voting. I really don't. So we're gonna put this to a vote. If it's done illegally and the city attorney is basically giving the green light saying it's not a legal issue, it's not, it's something probably not best practice.
But, Mayor, I disagree. I don't think it should even be put forth a motion because your charter clearly states on resolution. We're going against the charter of the city of Pohokee.
City of Pohokee.
So that should not even be a motion. You're going against your charter and your ordinance of the city of Pohokee.
Yes, she's...
She said, basically, it was for the manager's defense that we filed the charter. In this case, we're not putting his defense or whatever. We're voting on terminating the contract without cause. It is our right, we have a motion, we have a second, so please go on with the vote.
Vice Mayor, what's the termination date on this contract?
Twenty-third. March twenty-third. That's it, bingo.
If...
I started at the beginning and maybe she was listening.
City attorney, are we able to move with this motion at this time?
It is the pleasure of the commission, can we proceed?
I hope ethics is really looking at this right here. I really don't.
You are, I would say that I would recommend amending the motion. If you'd like to move it forward, and certainly it can be amended on with a majority vote, I think it can be amended with a majority vote, just to say that you'd like to move forward with the termination of the city manager.
Please shut up so we can hear.
To draft a preliminary resolution and present it to the city commission for their review. And if they agree, please just to do that. I certainly would also urge you to include in that motion that then the city commission will have ample, you know, have an opportunity to review it, discuss it, and then vote on it. So again, you're not voting on something you haven't seen and reviewed. So I certainly would urge you to make an amendment to include, to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to review this preliminary resolution.
That's fine. So I amend the motion to say, to ask the city attorney, the acting city attorney, to draw us to take a fifteen-minute, whatever it takes, twenty minutes, half an hour, whatever it is.
You need to be specific if you're going to, I mean...
Until she draws it up and gets it back to us today. I can make this motion any way I want, and you can't tell me how to do it. Well, then it'll be twelve o'clock, I guess. Okay, I make an emotion that this, we ask the acting city attorney to draw up a resolution, email it to the city clerk so that we can review it so that it will say that we are terminating the city manager without cause.
I amend that motion to stipulate the time in that fifteen minutes.
Half an hour. Can you do it in a half an hour, city attorney?
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, half an hour.
Motion is being made and seconded for a half an hour recess to allow the city attorney to draft up a preliminary resolution. Call for question, hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Bowlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Perez.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Mervin.
No.
Mayor Bab.
No. Motion passed to allow the city attorney to draft up a preliminary resolution. Up to thirty minutes, we're gonna recess in, we convene in thirty minutes. If three fifty-nine, we would resume our meeting at four twenty-nine within thirty minutes.
...
Take your different date from here.
I don't go for this.
I have it ready.
We got to swap this and one out.
Read further down.
At this time, we're going to reconvene our special call meeting at 4:36 PM. We're going to ask you to please refrain from speaking out. Only those who have the floor should speak. Those in the audience, please do not communicate or speak out. We're going to give you an opportunity prior to the voting to make citizen comments. After that, we'll have the official vote, and then conclusion of the meeting will be done after commissioners have an opportunity to.
Does that go for commissioners speaking out?
What I would do, if we have any major disruption, I'd ask PBSO to escort that individual, those individuals out. If it gets out of hand, then we need to clear the chamber to finish the business of the city. I hope it don't resort to that, but those are the two options we have individually removed. But if it's a group of folks that's really starting to disrupt this proceedings, I would have to ask for the chamber to be removed. Okay. We're going to give the commission just a opportunity to look over this resolution, and then we'll move forward with the meeting. And the resolution will be read by the city attorney. That'll give everyone an opportunity to look at it themselves, what you have in your hand, and also hear it read out loud of the minutes of the recording. We have the city attorney back home.
Yes. So they're reading them the resolution right now.
City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor.
Just a little clarification. I'm going to allow the residents an opportunity for citizen comments. I just want a little guidance on which you feel that need to be done prior to the resolution being read and a motion taken. Definitely for a vote, but I want to know whether we need to go ahead and take the citizen comments now, allow you to read the resolution into record, get a motion and a second, and then citizen comment. I just want to get the right procedure for doing that.
I certainly think that we should, I'm happy to read the resolution, and then you can open it to public comment on the normal procedure for public comment. So whenever you do a normal public comment, I would do that as a normal procedure, although I would do it after I've read the resolution. And I believe the clerk, I'm happy to say anyone would need a visual.
Okay, okay. I'll do it that way. So when you read it into the minutes, I'll then open it up as a public hearing or public comment. So if anyone haven't completed a call that wish to speak, this is time to try to go ahead and do so now. Outside of that, we're only going to be listening to those that filled out a call. Okay, city attorney, at this time, could you read resolution? And we didn't put a number on there. What's the resolution number going to be? We got 2022-.
Zero five.
Zero five, okay. City Attorney, would you now read resolution 2022-05 into the record?
Let me speak at any minute. Y'all may. Hold on. I'm sorry, I thought I heard the tone. Are you ready?
Yes, yes.
This is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pohokee, Florida, in accordance with Article 3, Section 3.03, entitled "Removal of the City of Pohokee Code of Ordinances" to provide reasons for the intended removal of the city manager and offer the charter officer city manager an opportunity for public hearing for the commission on the matters raised by the resolution. This is a preliminary resolution. Whereas, Article 3, Section 3.03, "Removal of the City of Pohokee Code of Ordinances" provides that in order to quote-unquote "remove," to remove a charter officer, the city commission shall adopt a preliminary resolution stating reasons for the intended removal, which will offer the charter officer an opportunity for public hearing before the commissioner, before the commission on the matters raised by the resolution. This preliminary resolution may also suspend the charter officer from duty immediately without, with pay. I'm sorry, immediately with pay. The charter officer must accept the offer of public hearing or file a written response within ten days of the adoption of the preliminary resolution, or the resolution becomes final at the expiration of this ten-day period, and the charter officer is terminated on that date. Public hearing is requested, it should be held not earlier than twenty days or later than thirty days after the adoption of the preliminary resolution. After such public hearings or after consideration of any written response, the commission shall adopt a final resolution of removal or let the preliminary resolution lapse. Whereas, at the March 18th, 2022, special meeting of the City of Pohokee City Commission, the commission voted to terminate the city manager without cause. Whereas, upon adoption of this resolution, the procedure in Article 3, Section 3.03, "Removal of the City of Pohokee Code of Ordinances" will commence. Whereas, under Article 3, Section 3.03, "Removal of the City of Pohokee Code of Ordinances," the charter officer of city manager will then have an opportunity for public hearing before the commission on the matter raised in this resolution. Whereas, the charter officer of city manager must accept the offer of public hearing or file a written response within ten days of the adoption of the preliminary resolution or the resolution becomes final at the expiration of this ten-day period, and the charter officer is terminated on that date. The public hearing is requested, it shall be held not earlier than twenty days or later than thirty days after the adoption of the preliminary resolution. Whereas, after such public hearings or after consideration of any written response, the commission shall adopt a final resolution of removal or let the preliminary resolution lapse. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Commission of the City of Pohokee, Florida, as follows. Section 1, action. City Commission has voted to terminate the manager, Greg Thompson, without cause. Section 2, notice. This resolution will serve as a preliminary resolution required for a charter officer under Article 3, Section 3.03, "Removal of the City of Pohokee Code of Ordinances." Section 3, adoption. Upon adoption of this resolution, the procedure in Article 3, Section 3.03, "Removal of the City of Pohokee Code of Ordinances" will commence. Under Article 3, Section 3.03, "Removal of the City of Pohokee Code of Ordinances," the charter officer of city manager will then have an opportunity for public hearing before the commission on the matters raised in this resolution. The charter officer of city manager must accept the offer of public hearing or file a written response within ten days of the adoption of the preliminary resolution, or this resolution becomes final at the expiration of this ten-day period, and the charter officer is terminated on that date. If the public hearing is requested, it shall be held not earlier than twenty days or later than thirty days after the adoption of the preliminary resolution. After such public hearings or after consideration of any written response, the commission shall adopt a final resolution of removal or let the preliminary resolution lapse. Section 4, effective date. As this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon passage. That is the end of the resolution.
Thank you, city attorney.
I'm making motion to pass resolution 2022.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
I have one question, counsel. Can I waive these rights? And if I do, what's the proper procedure?
I'm sorry, city manager, can you explain your question? We want to know if you can waive the rights to gain.
Can I waive these rights under Section 3, and what would be the procedure if I did so?
So Section 3 deals with this process, and there is a process that has to be followed by the city. If this resolution is adopted, you can either accept an offer of public hearing or file a written response. And you have ten days to file the written response, or this resolution becomes final at the end of that ten-day period, and you'll be terminated on that date. If you request a public hearing, then obviously there's more time between twenty and thirty days. And then after that, or consideration of the written response, the commission shall adopt the final resolution of removal or let this resolution lapse. This places the process on the city's process. So certainly, you may waive your rights, but the city still has a process that will go underway, and I would urge you to be cautious, you know, with waiving rights before it results with your own counsel. I would urge you to be cautious of that. Certainly, you have the right to do that, but the city process still has to. I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Kind of.
I have a question because I am confused. Okay, this resolution is basically looking out for the city manager, for us to give him proper notice, and then he's got twenty days, thirty days, ten days, all those days. So if we pass this ordinance, we have to follow all these procedures. But if we don't accept this ordinance, can we still go and do what we want to do and terminate him without cause?
To terminate a charter officer, you have to follow the charter, and this is a resolution. To terminate a charter officer, you have to follow the charter, and this is a resolution, not an ordinance, and you can't change the charter without an ordinance, which requires two reading, right? So I would, I would strongly urge you not to terminate a charter officer without following the charter. Doing so will subject the city to liability. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yes. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and.
I make a motion to pass a resolution.
Before the motion is adopted or passed, we're gonna allow citizen comments. Part of that process is to get our ear, our attention of their thoughts and comments. So we normally do that prior to voting, so that's what we'll do now. City Clerk, are there any citizen comment card completed?
Yes, sir.
You may start calling.
Richard Brown.
I wanna spoke, Richard Brown, 303 Carissa Drive. All I'm saying is that, listen, city manager, you outta here. Regina Bowden, you outta here. Now, all these ordinance that we go through through the process and all this horrific and all this other thing, we got hundreds and hundreds of viewers, not us, watching this. I want y'all to know that we're watching this here. And the city manager, I want you to know that I called you out a couple weeks ago by that blue club playing cup, that yellow cup that you had up there that ain't there today, that's not there today, and for whatever reason, you know why it's not there today. You think you finna skate, but you is out of him. You hear what I'm saying? You is out of him. And if y'all got any question, and y'all commissioners act like y'all didn't remember him having that blue club playing cup up there, "Don't tread on me, don't tread on me." It ain't there today. It's not there today. Of all the days, it's not there today. You know why? Cause he outta here and Regina Bowden, you outta here. And that just as simple as A and B.
City Clerk, do we have in addition comments card?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Otis Harvey Jr.
Good evening, everyone. Otis Harvey, 1940, Upper Point Road. I mean, I've been here to all the meetings, and everything was all as well last month. And, you know, Mr. Thompson, all due respect to you, man. I don't know why they firing you, and that's all I wanna know. No, 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 no. Mr. Thompson, I mean, I wanna know why they firing you, man. You're a good guy, you know you came to our city.
Ted, you have one more outburst, and you gonna have to leave.
You came to our city, you know you did well and stuff done. I can't figure out why all of a sudden, out of nowhere, they got a special meeting to just fire you, just like that. I mean, can't nobody tell me the ounces to you. I mean, you know, can anybody tell me? Anybody? Tell me why they firing? Well, I'll rest my time. I can't get no, still can't get no ounce. I'll rest my time.
Thank you. City Clerk, you can call the next.
Jenny Brown.
I give my time, you can call Martha. I thought they said we can't use time anymore.
They who?
Didn't we have something saying we're allowing to use time?
Ordinance 2021-05 that was passed last year, they're not allowed to use their time.
Okay, maybe at next meet, we can bring that for reference when that come up, because I'm not seeing anything in front of me, but.
Well, Mayor Bab, I think they should be able to, we doing something right now out of the norm to also letting the city attorney go out and do a resolution and bring back. So right now, I think we should be able to hear from the, from the, if they want to use their time today, I think it should be awarded to them due to we went out and waited thirty minutes on something that should've done at the next meeting to come back. I think they should be able to do that. They went against the ordinance to do this, so I think we can do that.
And an ordinance is an ordinance. We can't just ignore it because she doesn't like it.
Mr. Morrison have some time that.
Mr. Morrison has three minutes, like everybody else.
He'll be able to speak.
Can I get my three minutes now?
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Morrison, Senior, Citizens of Pahokee. Stevie Wonder can see. Stevie Wonder can see. I have the same question that Mr. Harvey had. You all had no questions whatsoever in reference to his ability. Matter of fact, you were giving him praise and accolades in reference to his ability to manage this city, and all of a sudden, you wanna terminate him. I have the same question, why? Don't take anyone in this chamber to be stupid. We see through it, but as you know, your time is limited. And if you would have not did this, I would've thought something was wrong, but you're doing what was expected of you, and I want you to know that the community is aware of it. Thank you.
You may call the next president.
Sanquata Cowan, 1548 Singletary Avenue. Mayor Bab, if possible, may I ask the Commissioner Gonzalez, I know you have been giving Mr. Thompson praise. Can you please tell me, Mayor Bab, if I may, ask Commissioner Gonzalez, you agreed to the meeting, what is your purpose for wanting to fire Mr. Thompson?
Well, I don't know when I ever told you I gave him praise. I only call, tell, I mean, people I spoken with, they asked me what were his good points, and I was honest with them.
So I wanna know what's your reason for wanting to fire him?
Well, he probably knows what it's about.
Now, I'm asking you to share with me, what is your reason? I'm a citizen, I have a right to know, that is not a secret. What's your reason for wanting to fire him?
Another person who was terminated, I still didn't answer that question.
Okay, well, may I move on to Commissioner Bowden? Mayor Bab, were you, Commissioner Bowden, are you willing to say why you wanted to fire Mr. Thompson?
I did it without cause.
Did it without cause. So you wanna fire someone doing a good job without cause, you just fire them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Perez, would you like to answer?
I have no comment.
No comment?
No, not whatsoever.
All right. Well, I just didn't understand, these are the commissioners that's representing us, and I just don't understand how you say he's doing a wonderful job and think he thought he was doing a great job, and now all of a sudden, before the new commission come in, you wanna fire him prior to the new commission coming in? Because I didn't see this as a emergency meeting, because from what I read, what special meetings are for? Special meetings are for items that cannot wait until the next commission meeting. And I just didn't see firing the city attorney, and then you are, I mean, firing the city manager, and then you want his termination date to be the 23rd, which is not following our charter, and then you leave the city without a city manager. But nonetheless, citizens, now we see, you say you love Pahokee. You are, it was okay when you all ran, you ran on firing the previous city manager, and then now you hear firing someone who's, you say, doing a great job. I just don't understand that, and thank you for not answering me, Commissioner Perez.
You may call the next speaker, the clerk.
May I ask a question of the city clerk? Are the comments supposed to be handed in prior to the meeting or throughout the meeting?
No, ma'am. Per the ordinance that you approved last year, 2021-05, they can hand it in during the topic.
What's the gentleman's name?
My name is Jason Crawford. You know me, Virginia.
Just making sure.
Jason Crawford, 1542 Lakeview, South Street, Florida. I just got a couple of questions. I'll start with the mayor. Mayor Bab, by, to your recollection, does Mr. Thompson have an application on file?
Not to my knowledge.
So if he doesn't have an application, how are we terminating him? I mean, he don't work for us anyway. So then, Mr. Thompson, you asked, can you circumvent the ordinance and waive your rights, right?
No, that's not what I said.
You asked, how can you waive the process or whatever that you asked the attorney?
I asked, if I could.
Okay, you could. Just quit. That's say if it's timing, we didn't have to have this meeting. Since you see the three that went out and got you, brought you in, me and you had a conversation, Mr. Thompson, prior to you coming in.
Nobody went out and got me, and the conversation never took place with you that said that. You're not, you're not being honest.
Okay, but anyway, the three that voted to bring you in, the same three voting to terminate you, so if you wanna waive the process and don't wanna go through the ordinance and all that, just quit. Say the city.
Thank you for your advice. It's not needed, though.
Okay, I'm gonna get into you, cause I'm a citizen.
I'll stick to legal advice.
Okay. But anyway, Commissioner Murpin, to your knowledge, does he have an application on file?
No, sir, I have asked, but I never received it.
Okay. Commissioner Gonzalez, does he have an application on file? You think, or do you know? Cause that been the subject of many conversations in the city commission meeting, people asking for his application, resume, or whatnot, or whatever, and never been produced. So do you know, do we have one? Commissioner Perez, do you know whether or not if he have an application on file?
City manager, you have something to say? I'm asking you, do you have something to say in reference to your application?
No, yes, cause you, you gotta hear what he's gotta say. It's his application, let him talk, let him say why.
I'm done with that.
Let him say why.
Vice Mayor Bowden, Commissioner Bowden.
You need to speak out.
Do you know whether or not if he have an application on file?
No.
Does he?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know? City Clerk, does he have an application on file?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, then, so while we wasting time, tell my, we waited thirty minutes for them to print out an ordinance that was unnecessary, he doesn't have an application on file, so just quit. We've been playing this game for over a year, man, almost a year. We got other things that we could be doing. There's a fraud. Quit, go to Gloucester. Same way you did with the, with Mill. I was part of that game.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Do we have any other comments cards, City Clerk?
Christopher Chapman.
Greg.
What's the next person's name?
Do you know where I speak?
Christopher Chapman, 245 Cypress Avenue. I'm gonna be very brief. I hope that we all learned a valuable lesson in this room this afternoon, because now you're upset because you got exactly what you asked for, the process.
The process, yes.
Had you done your homework before you got in this room, we would've been going home by now, actually. Let it be a lesson for all of us. When we come here to represent the citizens of Pahokee, make sure that we've done the homework, make sure we have the facts straight, and make sure that we're ready to proceed with the business, not wasting thirty minutes for nothing, for the process that still has to happen that was explained to you when this topic was first introduced to the floor. You guys are on a vengeance, rage war, whatever you wanna call it, leave with some class and dignity. You make yourself look like a fool. This is a waste of our time, but guess what? I'm gonna keep showing up every time, because if we don't show up, stuff like this will happen. It's a sad day, and I'm glad to see you go. Do us all a favor, don't show up to the next meet.
In addition to cards, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Thank you. At this time, having had the resolution read into the record, I entertain the desire of the rejoice of the commission.
I would, I wanted the city manager to speak out and say why you don't have, why you don't have your, your application. What happened to your application?
I do have an application filled out.
And what happened to it?
It's on my desk as we speak.
And what happened to it? Why, did you turn it in to, to HR at any point?
I did.
Huh?
I did.
And what happened? You took it back?
I did.
Why?
Cause someone asked me to.
Someone asked you to? Someone that, that sitting right here, and it's, and it's, and it's saying that you didn't turn in an application, right? Okay. That's all I want.
That's crazy.
Say it, say it.
Say it. Be honest. Tell them the whole story. Tell them the whole story.
That is, that is correct.
Tell them the whole story.
Wait, Mr. Thompson, you kinda dragging. Who told you to take your application back?
Tell them the whole story.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Tell them the whole story.
He's asking you to tell the whole story though behind that.
I turned in application, and he asked me to keep it until later time.
Tell them the whole story. You want me to tell them?
Yes.
The reason I told him by the time he turned in the application, cause he lied to me more than three times that he had turned it in, and I told him, why do you wait till the last minute? Election's right around the corner, I want to avoid the drama. After the election, do what you want to with the, with the application or resume. We do not need the extra drama, cause he already knew that he was out the door.
I would just, I would disagree with that. I was, I was asked to withdraw it till after the election.
Please, audience, any other outbursts, some help.
This election, this election.
Did you all mean?
It was two, two or three weeks before the election.
Okay, so you've been working since five months from now, four to five months, and you just now would turn your application in now? So I think the question was, was there application on file now? I don't know, but I know I've worked several jobs, and I know to get to get that job and start working, I had to fill the application out prior to starting work on, on those jobs. So now you're gonna turn application in now, but you was working five months ago, so without application or resume on file.
I, I know.
I don't understand that process.
I know this have some minor connection with the resolution, but what I would like to do at this time, if there's a motion and a second, then we can discuss anything pertaining to it.
They already in there.
Including application, if, if so desired. So are there a motion to move this resolution forward or not? Commissioner Perez made the motion. Who's seconded?
Second.
Been properly seconded by Vice. Been properly seconded by Vice Mayor Bowlin. Call for questions now, any questions?
Now, I have a question. Is he entitled to the whole fifty grand, or is that negotiable? I'm talking to the Commission.
If, if this went through and passed, which is currently a preliminary, but say the ten days elapsed, or whatever timeframe within this, uh, procedure, then he would be paid fifty thousand servant pay, equivalent of five-month salary. If the resolution go all the way through and passes.
So, it's non, it's non-negotiable?
Not, not at this time, no, not for that.
So, let's add up. Let's add up, from the five months he's been here, at ten thousand a month, add that, compared to the fifty, so in five months, he be made over a hundred some thousand dollars. That's what you got, that's, that's where we at.
Ten thousand a month, ten times five, times five months, is a hundred thousand?
We'll be at a hundred thousand dollars within the five months, if you work five months at, at ten thousand dollars a month, how much is that? Okay, and another fifty thousand is what? But I, but I do have a question on, this is a preliminary, uh, thing, and I, and one thing, I'm glad that we have to go through the process. So, this means, what was the date again, that he, that he was, uh, March, what?
It's today.
March twenty-third. Right, so you have to add ten days, it goes to- Okay, March twenty-eighth. So, in that, and so, we go to March twenty-eighth, he still has to be working in the city, add up to March twenty, am I correct? Uh, I guess that's to the city attorney.
So, so technically, no. So, so, here's the thing about the process. There is a process that the city has in its charter. That process does not give the manager a right to waive under that process and, and, and eliminate the process. And I would not recommend it. There are options that can be pursued, and so, no, he doesn't have to be working, um, you know, o- obviously, if you terminate, uh, some, you know, an employee, you might not want them to be working there for longer. So, there are options, um, that would make the timeline go differently. So, for example, he can request a hearing, or he can file a written response. He, he has to file, he either has to request a hearing, or, or request, or file the written response within ten days. That does not mean on ten days. He could file a written response in one day, or two days, or five days, or ten days. He can also request for the public hearing, um, and he, again, has, has the time to do that. Again, he can do it in one day, five days, ten days, and then the public hearing would have to be scheduled. So, if those, if that was the option that he chose as that charter officer, there's a lot of, I, I guess what I'm trying to say, there's a lot of different ways that, under this process, the timeline could go based on the decisions that the charter officer of city manager makes. Um, and then there's obviously options, depending on his option that he chooses, that would trigger the option of public, of what the public hearing for the Commission looks like. So, to answer your question, does that mean on March twenty-eighth, he would still be working for the city? Not necessarily. It, it is entirely, at this point, i- if this resolution passes, it, it would be, the next step would be, the ball then goes to the city manager's court, and he can decide, do I want to request a hearing, do I want to file a response? He can file that written response as soon as he wants, or within those ten days, he can request that hearing as soon as he wants, or within those ten days. So, and then, depending on what he does, that would then determine the city's next steps. Um, and then, obviously, the public hearing, if that's the option he chose, would need to be scheduled. Does that, does that answer your question?
Not really. No, so, okay, so, in other words, so, if this is passed today, and that means, I know he has up to ten days, it don't have to be the ten days, he has up to ten days, he can file it tomorrow, what have you, but he's still employed, right, with, to the city, uh, technically, uh, with this ordinance. He's not, he cannot just not file and go home and wait, yeah, wait it out. You see what I'm saying?
Okay, well, so, so, let me, let me, let me outline sort of what can happen next. Uh, there, there are a few different options, and may, I'm sorry if I wasn't more clear. Option one, he does nothing, and ten days goes by, ten days fully lapses, and at the end of that ten days, this resolution becomes final, and he is terminated. That's option one, if he does nothing. And it's pa- I, I, I'm sorry, assuming it's passed today. Passed today, he does nothing, at the end of that ten-day period, and he does nothing, it becomes effective, and he is terminated, under this resolution. Option two, he accepts the offer of a public hearing sometime within the next ten days, if it's passed today, and then the city has to schedule that public hearing between twenty and, no earlier than twenty days, and no later than thirty days, from today, if it was adopted today. Option three, he has ten days to file a written response, and again, he can file that response as soon as he wants. If that resolution is passed today, he can file a written response today. He can file it up to the very end of the tenth day, that, you know, that's, again, that ball then is in his court. Then it comes back to the Commission, and then the Commission can decide, um, either that the, the public hearing happens, or they consider his written response, and then the Commission can either adopt the final resolution of removal, or let the preliminary resolution last, and then he would not be terminated, he would remain an employee. Now, in this Article Three, Section 3.03, there is an important option that is in there, s- so, if the Commission wants to do this, they have the prerogative, which is, if you look at the, um, resolution, at the first whereas clause, and it's, uh, fifth line down, it says, "This preliminary resolution may also suspend the charter officer from duty immediately with pay." That's in there, because, again, to your point, Commissioner, oftentimes, when you're terminating an employee, which is, you know, effectively the relationship the city has with the city manager, you might not want that employee sticking around, right? And so, you can do that while this clock runs, and then the manager can decide what he wants to do. So, you don't have to do that, but I will tell you that it's in there, so you have the option to, to do that, if you so choose.
Thank you, City Attorney. Are there any additional questions? Harry, none of y'all, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bowlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
No. Motion passed by majority, four-one vote. Now, we'll have Commissioners' comments, and at that conclusion, we'll adjourn our meeting for today. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Well, I'd like to apologize, you got, to you guys, for sticking around for so long, we could've done this earlier, in a better manner. That's all I could say.
Vice Mayor Bowlin?
No comment.
Commissioner Perez?
No comment.
Commissioner Mervin? No comment for the mayor.
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Then move his second. All in favor, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bowlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Meet adjourned, thank you.